Call this meeting to order, and if the clerk could please call the roll.
Commissioner Bailey.
Present.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Alrighty, if we could have Commissioner Lumberman give us the prayer for tonight.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you would bless this meeting and bless us with open minds and open hearts as we consider the matters before us tonight. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. We stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Alrighty, we had a couple proposed changes in the agenda. Under K, we're number one, we're going to have Marcus go first, and then we'd like to move Matt up who's numbered, or Chris, was it Chris? Chris, yep, up from number 10 in that cycle to number two. Drop everybody down. And then on item eight, we had a, Keegan wants to bring up a position he'd like to, I believe, reclassify. So that would be 8A. If we could have a motion on those changes. So motion by Commissioner, is the second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Very good. Matt, any comment you see? There's anyone online that would like to make a public comment, unmute yourself and go ahead. If you're on a cell phone, I believe it's a star six. Alrighty, I don't, doesn't sound like we have anybody. Next, next is the consent calendar. The minutes and the other items here. Does anybody want to remove anything to talk, talk about in this?
What was the consent calendar?
Okay, could I just, I had one, just wondering about one thing. Under the Michigan Works, I see there's a salary amount of like, a payroll of like 820, $2,000, but then in bonuses and, and additional costs of 720. I just wonder, and that's awfully high. You know what that's about?
Yeah, um, just a minute here. On the page. Well, let me explain it a little bit to you. What it is, the money that comes, the money, all the money from Michigan Works goes to Saginaw County. And Saginaw County has, I guess for the last, whatever, however long the Michigan Works has been there, has been doing the paperwork. So you might as well say this is kind of like an indirect cost. But what they were using, what they were doing is, they have 13 people that work, apparently doing things for Michigan Works, and that money is used to, what did you, you said 103, but I can see it online. What place do you have?
F and D, shoot. So, so you're saying, Jan, that it's high because Saginaw Counties must be way behind on some things in their amounts they have to put in on retirements are high?
Well, first of all.
Like us?
So this doesn't get too complicated in this conversation. We're working on a few things right now. I've been on a special committee since January. And we're going to have another meeting, couple of meetings this coming month. And we thought we had this pretty well taken care of. They've been using the money from Michigan Works to pay some of the retirement on the employees there, which is illegal. And so this has been a discussion with the board, with the special committee. Now they're going to use the whole board, which is, before it was, I think, it was 12 of us, and now it's going to go to all 25 of us. And, and there is a dispute. They say they can use it, and according to attorneys, and they're going to do a special audit, and they cannot use the money coming in from Michigan Works for retirement, or for some of the things that they're using it for. So there is a battle over this right now, and I'm not sure exactly where it's going to stand. On it, I thought it was going to be taken care of this last month, but it hasn't been.
Okay.
And so I, I put this in here so you kind of have an idea of what is going on. And what I will do is keep you posted in the next few meetings. And if anybody would like to go to the meetings or zoom in, let me know. I will get you a, a link where you can zoom in and watch it too.
Okay, well, thank you, Jan. Keep us posted. I just thought that looked out of line, so.
It is out of line. That's what, one of the things too, the CEO of Michigan Works had been there beginning, and he retired, and we have a new person on who's been there in a second year. And he was the one that caught some of the stuff that, money that's not supposed to be used for what it's being used for. But it is being disputed by Saginaw and the Michigan Works Board. So that's pretty much what's going on. And so they're, they're getting a legal opinion and also they'll probably do a, they are doing an audit on it.
Alright, thank you for that update, Jan. We had a motion on the floor from, from Commissioner Bailey. Was there a second to approve the consent agenda?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any further discussion or any questions on it? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Alrighty, so. We, Tracy wasn't going to give an administrative report from my understanding, because she's going to be talking on several issues tonight. Commissioner Committee Report. John, you have anything?
Just that the airport authority has gone ahead with a lawyer. They have, at least we, we finalized the, the selection of a lawyer to guide us as we move forward. That's really all I've got with that. We've got the Parks and Rec Committee, we've got the, I'm sure, on things on the agenda tonight.
Alrighty, thank you. Commissioner Bailey?
We had a Board of Health meeting, and we talked about COVID and the different counties and what the percentage was in the counties. And Greshit County is still about 60%, not, not been vaccinated yet. It's better, but it was at 35, and then it went to, to about 40, so we're 40% vaccinated. So we've got a long ways to go in this county. And so I just, I just hope people will take heed and get their vaccinations. It'll help everybody down the road if they do that.
And the only thing I had, I was also, you know, at that meeting, and they pointed out that Mayosha has come out with a thing that, you know, if you have been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. But people that haven't been vaccinated do have to. So I would think that would help us with some of the statistics and getting people to maybe go ahead and get vaccinated. Jan, you have anything?
Yes, I do. Again, I was at the Michigan Works meeting last week. I was also at Breckenridge meeting last week, and passed out all the papers that we've had. The Sheriff's Report and the Equalized Report, and I'm very pleased to get them. Pleased to get your report. Even, it's just kind of fun to look through and compare what's going on in the county. So thank you for that. Other than that, that was only two big meetings that I attended.
Anything? Have any meetings? Nothing. Okay, excellent. Then moving on, a new business. Marcus, you're up first with a, a report on some license fees issues.
Yes, thank you. Chairperson Murphy, do you want to say anything by way of introduction, or should I just jump in?
Just go ahead. I think you can handle it.
Okay, so I'm speaking to you about Senate Bills 353 and 354, which are moving toward the floor for a vote, and seem very likely to pass. These are sponsored by Senator VanderWaal, and Senator Outman is on, is one of the co-sponsors of that. And these bills would waive license fees for food service establishments. And in plain English, that means restaurants won't have to pay for their licenses during the current year. And the concept is to help restaurants recover from COVID. So depending on the kind of restaurant, that's giving them anywhere from a $400 to a $600 break in their fees. So that's a pretty good thing to do for our local businesses. So we, the Health Department followed up and spoke with Senator VanderWaal about this and said, Senator, great idea helping the restaurants, but this is going to impact local Health Department budgets. And what is your thoughts about how local health departments should deal about, deal with this? And he said, you should ask your counties for money from the American Rescue Plan to offset the losses, which we thought was pretty stunning, because he's a senator and he has a lot of work to do with the state budget, but he doesn't control the county budgets. But that was the thinking. So we then went to our Board of Health, talked to, of course, you know, all three, every county. Clinton, Greshit, and Macon has two county commissioners who are on the Board of Health. And so we ran this by them. You know, we had to talk to the Board of Health because we knew that this would cause about somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000 deficit in their budget. So we had to say, if this bill passes, it will, Board of Health, cause a deficit in your budget. So we have to tell you this is coming, and, and what do you think? And the, the Board of Health said, we'll talk to the county administrators. So we did. We, we had a meeting with the administrators from all three counties. And after, you know, mentioning that it was quite a deal for a state senator to tell counties how to spend their money, they then said, yes, actually, this would be good for our local restaurants to get a break in their fees. And it would be a good and correct use of American Rescue Plan dollars. So we're here with a proposal to you, and we're going to all three of the counties and asking the same thing. Would you consider using American Rescue Plan dollars to offset the lost revenue to the Health Department if this bill passes, becomes law, and there are no food fees this year? So by way of background, like all other American states, Michigan has a food law. This is one of those gigantic laws, you know, like the dog law, or the law related to roads, or the Public Health Code, or something like this, which is, exists to help the state manage large amounts of requirements placed on the states by the federal government. In this case, the Federal Department of Agriculture. Of course, and, and money comes to the states with this, but the, the states put, then turn around and put requirements from this law on the counties. This happens in all 50 states. So in Michigan, all of the counties are required to ensure safe food through restaurants, and this includes twice annual inspections, trainings for their staff, and many other things. Part of the reason the three counties, Clinton and Greshit and Macon, got together and created a Health Department was to take the burden of administering this complicated restaurant program off of the Board of Commissioners and give it to another body, the Health Department, that would handle that. And for decades, we've been doing that on your behalf. We are part of you and do much work on, on your behalf. So we're here to tell you that if this bill does pass, it will lead to a significant deficit in the Health Department budget, which would then probably cause us to not be able to inspect all the restaurants, which would then mean we, you, because we are part of you, would run afoul of state law, and we would probably get called on the carpet by the Michigan Department of Agriculture for not keeping up with our restaurant inspections. So if we do this, Clinton, excuse me, Greshit County's share of the $250,000 to $300,000 deficit would be about $60,000. That's what we would be asking you to make up. So I'll turn it over to Liz. Liz Braddock, our Environmental Health Director, then to talk about the details of how we would implement this.
Hi, good evening. Oh, my name is Liz Braddock. And as Marcus mentioned, we are not asking for a vote tonight. We're just here to inform you that in Greshit County, we had billed for about $57,000, and about 85% of the restaurants have actually paid their licensing fee for 2021. So since we have relationships with these restaurants, and we have billing addresses, what we would do is then reimburse them with the money provided to us from the county, from the American Rescue Plan, so that these restaurants, and when I say restaurants, it includes actually schools, golf courses, and anybody who serves food in the community. And we would then reimburse them with a check of what they have paid us. And a part of what they pay us, and this includes $35, which is a state fee, and the state is looking at setting up a reimbursement fund, so that the, the money for the state's part of the fee also gets back to these restaurants. So thank you for considering this.
Yes, questions, Commissioners?
So Marcus, you're asking for $60,000 or $57,215?
Oh, it would be, what's the exact number? Let's not, it's, we would actually, we would send you the final number. Yes, 57215, Commissioner.
Is a projected number?
Projected, and once we see how many restaurants actually are going to apply for licenses, we will then know the exact number. This is, so the 57215 is from last year, and we think it'll be almost exactly the same. Plus maybe $400 or $500 for the time to reimburse the restaurants.
Marcus, I have a question for you.
Yes, Commissioner Bunting.
About the classes that the restaurants are mandatory to take, will they still take those classes, or do you, are you not doing that either?
I think the answer is yes, but we will ask the expert, Liz Braddock.
The, the main concern is if we don't have enough funding for the food program, what, one of the things that we would have to do is maybe restrict the amount of people who can come into our classes. Right now, two people per licensed facility can have the classes for free. We do have our first one scheduled post-COVID this summer in Greshit County. Our main concern is foodborne illness is always a, a, a large concern, especially with the number of people who are now maybe doing takeout and maybe changing the way that their business practices have worked. So we want to be able to be visible in the community, and if we don't have the funding, we wouldn't be as visible, and wouldn't be able to do as many inspections and follow-up inspections at the facilities.
So with the funding, Liz, I think we would do business as usual, as Commissioner Bunting was asked.
We would do, we would offer the classes, yes.
Yeah.
Marcus, George.
Yes.
Appreciate you coming to the meeting, both you and Liz, to enlighten us on what may happen. I just want to tell everybody that it hasn't happened yet. Okay, there's a lot of things that have to happen in Lansing before we're going to get the call to do this. But I think the board is probably pretty unified in the fact that we're not going to let the Health Department down, and we'll take, if we have to, we'll take care of them. But there again, our state has decided that another unfunded mandate should be pushed down upon the counties. And I'm not happy about that. And I, the last time, the fellow was here from MAC, and I told him that, and he said he was going to fight for it. So. That being said, I think we should just, you know, we take it under consideration. I think, I think your, your request will probably be diligently taken care of if needed. But right now, I don't, I think we probably, we got to push back on the state, because I've been told by Senator Outman, Representative Outman, and Representative Fuller, the state's got a lot of money. A lot of this American Rescue Plan money. You know, so for them to tell, come back with their great ideas, which I do not say was a bad idea, all right? We should help the restaurants. We should help small businesses as much as we can. A doggone it, there's another unfunded mandate coming down from the state, and we have to push back on those things. It's just not fair. So that's, that's all I've got to say is that, yes, in my opinion, this board will take care of the situation if need be. But for right now, I think we got to push back on the state for a while.
I agree, Commissioner Bailey. We, I just wanted to get this in front of you before it was an emergency.
I agree with you, George. I'm sure we're going to take care of the Health Department if we have to. But we should be contacting our representatives on this.
I've talked, I've had the chance to talk to all of them, and that's what I did, so.
Marcus, you said before it becomes an emergency, when, theoretically, when would it become an emergency?
Well, if we were getting to the end of the fiscal year and didn't have revenue to cover, you know, it would cost us approximately three FTEs. So that would be, you know, a huge chunk of our sanitarians would be taken out of the field. So it, we, we still have, you know, a couple of months before we're starting to get anxious about it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what, do you have, have an idea when that bill's coming up for vote?
I, I'm sorry, Commissioner, we can't make eye contact. I, I think you're asking me, and no, I don't know yet.
Yeah, okay. I've not heard either. I've not heard either. I was just wondering if you found out something.
No, I did talk to Representative Outman, and he wasn't sure either at the time that I talked to him, so.
I will keep a keen eye on this and, and what we need to do.
Alrighty, any other questions? Alrighty, well, thank you, Marcus and Liz, and you, you folks are still doing an outstanding job. We appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you very much. I will go unmute at the, an interesting agenda tonight, so I'm going to stick around for a little while.
Alrighty. Okie doke. And then, so we're going to move Chris up from number 10, I believe. A, a revenue sharing resolution. Chris, you there?
I am. Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for accommodating with my schedule tonight. I appreciate it, and I apologize to everybody else who's waiting. But what I have here is a resolution that the Michigan Association of Counties has requested that all the counties that qualify for in, in this instance, would, would pass. So this resolution I have is something that MAC has written, that I have filled in the numbers for. And what it relates to is back pay for revenue sharing that the state of Michigan did not give to counties. Back in 2004, they passed a bill where, during the recession, that allowed them to not pay counties state revenue sharing. What they did instead was made the counties self-fund a restricted fund that they would draw from in the future, and that, that self-funded pot of money came from our general operating taxes. So essentially, we were paying ourselves state revenue sharing. This pot for Greshit County ran out in 2009. Between 2009 and 2014, MAC has determined that the state shorted us $667,000 state revenue sharing, based on what they told us they would pay us. And that number is $1.37 million, million dollars when you look at the law and apply the annual inflation rate to what they were supposed to pay us. So this resolution is saying, is, is kind of saying along the same things that the state is now, has a large influx of money with these ARP money, the American Rescue Plan. And it is requesting that the state makes us whole for those years that counties were shorted due to the law passed in 2004. I believe at this time last, I saw a week and a half ago, 12, 12 of the 61 eligible counties had passed this. But like I said, that was a week and a half ago, and that, that data was probably a little outdated also.
Alrighty, thank you, Chris. Anybody have any questions on this? I believe this is on page 159 in my packet. It was a resolution you're looking for.
I move, we adopt the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Lumberman. We have a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bunting. Any questions or further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Alrighty, we're back to MSU Extension is next. Lou?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Good. I'm, I'm not using my normal headphones, so I just wanted to make sure, but and I'm not in my normal setting. I had to be away from my desk this afternoon, but I appreciate the opportunity to kind of bring you up to date on MSU Extension. I want to review just a little bit what we did in 2020, just so you know. And then I, I, I do want to speak about the folks that we have in the office so that you know how to access them if you need to, or if your constituents do. And then a little bit about where we're going from here with, with the pandemic and some of the restrictions being lifted, et cetera. And then answer any questions you have. So I believe that I've got the ability to share my screen, and so I'm going to share a report that you have in your packet. And I'm going to stroll through this. Hopefully, I won't make you too dizzy. But in 2020, one thing that I had to realize, and we all had to realize, when the stay-at-home orders were put into effect, there was not a lot of joy over that, and that's a very great understatement. But the realization that people still needed information, there are certain industries, obviously, that they counted on, whether it be the grocers, the farmers, et cetera, the supply chain, suppliers, the truckers. So business had to continue on, but for a large, for a large part, people were turning to online resources to gather information, vital things, and and, and I encourage you to take a look at this report. It's only about six pages, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. Joyce McGary is one of our food safety educators in our district. She actually is in the, she's housed in Ingham County, but she, she writes and serves all of our six counties in the district, and she's spent a lot of time in Greshit County. But I wanted to point her out, just to kind of give her kudos. So she put some articles online right away. I put the dates in the report that you can see on there early on in the pandemic. Information that people wanted right away. Simple things like, what do I do? And we already, someone mentioned, I think it was Marcus, about the restaurants changing the way they do things and doing a lot of takeout now, but simple things like, you know, is the groceries that I bring home, are the groceries I bring home, are they safe? How about takeout foods? And what, what things do I have to do? So dispelling some of the myths, giving some good practical suggestions and how to safely handle. suggestions and how to safely handle food during that time. So those articles were actually very, very well populated. And Joyce was interviewed, not just in Michigan, but across the country for some of her expertise. So I just wanted to point those things out. And so, as people continue to turn to online resources, they didn't necessarily go directly to the MSU Extension website, but they landed on our website. So as you see there, and I've got it highlighted, that the users soared to over 1.7 million and made over 3 million visits. Gracha County in particular, 3,700 users made over 6,200 visits during the heart of the pandemic, viewing over 24,000 pages. With that, we had to make the shift to continue to provide information, just not in written form, but also forums, just like we're in now, where there's meetings, or there's education sessions where people could be provided information and ask, and ask questions and have some face-to-face. So a lot of our educators made that pivot by developing curriculum or adapting curriculum, so it'd be good for online use. Just a current example of that, some of our community nutrition instructors are still doing programming in schools, and as we wind down here, and they had to adapt their program to online, but still, they do a lot of food demonstrations and work with the youth to teach them about nutrition. So one of the things is they had food delivered. So they made use of another industry, and that's the food delivery industry, whether it be the various entrepreneurs who did that and whatnot, to deliver food to those locations, and then they did the instruction online. So that's some of the things they adapt. And I'm going to scroll down past 2021. I just want to go to our office real quick. So throughout the pandemic, we tried to limit, of course, we're separate from the county building, so that made it a little easier having a separate location. But we tried to have Joan and/or Kami be in the office in limited fashion. If they could work remote, we had them do so. We provided laptops for both of them so that they would have that flexibility. But then as, as we went on, we tried to have, even if it was by appointment only, so that we could facilitate pick up and drop off at the office, eventually help especially 4H participants as they prepped for fair, picking up tags and whatnot, even though the, at the time, there wasn't any online programming taking place. So I just wanted to send kudos to our support staff, who are county employees. Diane Longenbach, who is a Product Center Innovation Counselor, works with entrepreneurs and was able to see multiple clients. It's much like myself being able to attend many meetings in a day that I wouldn't otherwise because of Zoom. She is able to work with clients throughout the state really, and also close to home, utilizing Zoom. You can look at some of her numbers, some of the economic numbers that were generated by that program. David Rowley is also in the office, and, and he's relatively new to the office, for those of you don't know him, but he's with our government and Community Vitality. And some of his programming actually flourished and blossomed during the 2020 year. Because again, it made it easier for some folks to access programs, like understanding Michigan's property tax law, for instance. Whereas they, they didn't want to attend a program in person, but they now were able to do that, and I'll let you look over those numbers in your report. Erica Rogers did a lot of work online, and that was a good thing. She, she and her husband welcomed a micro-preemie this year during the pandemic. And took quite a bit of time off, was, but was able to still serve our farmers via online, otherwise would not be able to. I mean, her, her daughter, who's still doing very well, was born at 25 weeks, just to give you an idea. So we were thankful for that option for Erica. As were Casey Zangaro, our SWIN educator. She continues to adapt her programming. She really did develop a nice biosecurity mapping, did that project, and made it available to hog farmers throughout the region so that they could prepare for crisis situations. And so that was accomplished. She did have to go to the office on occasion because of internet connectivity, which, you know, we are, we have found over the past year, and that's becoming an issue, and to the extent that some of those recovery funds may be earmarked at some point for broadband, that's, that's a good thing, because we experienced it ourselves with an extension. Monica Jean, because of her proximity to the office, became more and more involved, and she's a field crops educator, not only helping out Mon Calm while we were missing that position in that county, but also taking up regular visits to the office in Elma, at our office located there, and she's outstanding. And you can see there, she's had over 13,000 contacts with people. She's started a very successful podcast, so that's another product of the, the pandemic, in addition to working face-to-face with farmers. And Natasha Dupree, I already mentioned, the Community Nutrition Instructors, she actually was hired during the pandemic. So she started out her new staff onboarding actually in a remote situation, and that was awfully interesting. So we all had to learn new things. Chris Thompson, our 4H Program Coordinator, that was probably the most difficult pivot to make. Chris is very much used to hands-on programming, and I know that that's, 4H is a source of a lot of frustration with many as far as in-person programming. But I'll get to it in just a minute, the, where we're, where we're at now, but you know, he did a great job with what he was handled. He was probably the most frustrated in the office, so I just want to point that out. We have other services throughout the county that are offered by other educators that are not housing the office, like Brenda Long, who works with folks who are facing foreclosure. I always like to mention some of the things that Extension does that not everyone is aware of, and then I think that's all I've got listed there. Hold on just a second. Let me scroll back up here. So this was, I, I wanted to point out this picture. This picture was actually a field day, and field days, as some of you are aware of, is where farmers come, or agents come, or consultants come to a research station and learn the latest about the pesticides and, and and fertilizers, et cetera. And we weren't able to do that during 2020, but we did actually do virtual field days, and that was very interesting. This is just a picture of, that's actually some compost. But there's a good article. So everything in this report, like I said, it's six pages. I put live links in it so that you could go through to some of the articles if you desire to do so. And then I wanted to point out, I want to, so just bear with me, don't get Zoom sickness on me. I want to go back up. So far in 2021, and this is not accurate, because I got some new numbers recently, but you see here from our Community Food and Environment Institute, Can You Explain Your Tax Bill? That's Dave Rowley's class. Physically Righty Communities, that's part of Dave Rowley's programming. Current Issues Affecting Local Government. These are classes that have been taken so far in 2021 in an online format. So I want to point that out, because David is really doing a nice job during this time. Anxious to get back for in-person programming like everybody else, but he's doing well. And then, of course, the Field Crops webinar series, the Beginning Farmer series. Master Gardener for the First Time is being offered online. I know that there's been a lot of folks who couldn't travel to one of the Master Gardener classes, who have been asking for an online class. That is something born out of necessity. It actually is one that's taking place. And then, of course, some of the mental health issues have been prominent during this time of isolation, and so our, our, our health team, our behavioral health team have really done a nice job of adapting programs and working with folks who have needs in that area. So I, I wanted to point out, that's where we are, and where are we now? And I'm going to, I'm going to stop sharing just so I can see everybody's faces, because I've, I don't have my normal double screens. So where we are right now, we're, and I was thankful that today we were on Zoom still, just because of the circumstances that I'm in today. But what I've tried to do is, is only have who is necessary go to the office, even though we're not located in the county building, and make sure that we have ample room for distancing and whatnot. Some of those restrictions through MSU have been lifted as of today. So actually, we're going to start working in, subject to the county's admonitions not to, our staff in each one of our office, offices on a regular basis up to five days a week, if they're able to. And so that will represent a good thing, but as I've told each one of our staff, we want to be subject to the concerns of the local counties that we are serving. But that's taking place. In regard to in-person programming, there's been a number of programs that have taken place. I just want you all to know, Gracha County, actually, it was one, and, and it was related to one of the programs put on by our Field Crops team that had, were allowed in, and in-person meeting much earlier during the pandemic. Because our educator Monica and Erica really pushed for it and saw that need. But those programs are being done, I liken it to, some people may run into the Lake Huron or Lake Michigan right away. Some may have to go in and get their ankles wet first. We're kind of just wading in slowly in trying to do it in a controlled manner as restrictions across the state are being lifted. But making sure that we're meeting that in-person need with the mindset that as we work through the summer and, and head into the fall, that we'll be up to full capacity sooner rather than later. So that's certainly moving in that direction. That hasn't pleased everyone. Now, just be honest with you, as far as the speed of which that's taken place, MSU as an organization has moved a little bit slower than, than other entities. But that's just, that's been the case. And so it's something that I've had to deal with, as well as our educators in the field. But that, that calendar is, is becoming more and more less restrictive, as opposed to new expectations being placed on the in-person program, and that's how I like to describe it. So we're trying to do things in accordance with our health officials and in accordance with, and state guidance, but at the same token, we realize that the public needs to be served, and we've got services that they need, and they aren't going to always want to get those online. So we're doing our best to meet those needs as soon as possible. So I'm, I've, I've kind of rambled on here, and not listened, but I'll stop there. You've got that report, and if there's anybody that has questions, I'd be happy to see if I can answer those for you today.
Alrighty, thank you. Any questions for Bill? I don't hear any. Thank you very much.
That's a good sound. That means we explained it good enough for you. So that's good. But please contact me if you, if you do have questions, and I am, I'm expected elsewhere, so I'm going to sign off with your grace to do that.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the Gracha Integrated Health Network has a resolution for us. Michelle?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for getting me on the agenda this evening. I'd like to present a resolution to the county commissioners for consideration regarding taking a stance to oppose the privatization threat to the public community mental health system. Some of you may recall that back in 2017, we, we kind of fought this fight already when there was a proposed carbon of the approximately $3 billion Medicaid behavioral health benefit under the Governor Snyder budget. In 2019, we were able to thwart that after ample advocacy efforts and the inability of the health plans to really materialize their plan through some pilot sites. So that's kind of been died off for quite some time, or for the last several years, and most recently has received a reboot. Currently, Senator Shirkey has a proposal on the floor. It hasn't turned into an actual bill at this point, but we're expecting that anytime now, titled Gearing Towards Integration, where essentially it would be taking the public behavioral health benefit managed by community mental health agencies across the state and, and handing that over to the for-profit private Medicaid health plans. Just last week, Representative Whiteford dropped her, released her House bills. Looks like it's House Bill 4925 through 4929, where she's essentially proposing a similar privatization, though not quite of the same bane as Senator Shirkey's. We view these both as incredibly detrimental if they were to go through either one of these to our community. It lacks all public oversight that we are able to provide now. Essentially, be taking, skimming off of, you know, the Medicaid dollars that we receive to serve our most vulnerable population in Gracha County and distributing that to shareholders. We operate at a very low administrative cost as a public entity, approximately 5% to 6% per year, versus the public, or excuse me, the private health plans, which operate around a 16% administrative overhead. Additionally, if these, if either of these plans or any future privatization plans were to come to fruition, the most notable things that we would see in this community would be the lack of our current service provision. So we would turn into a fee-for-service model, and a lot of the things that we're able to do to provide safety net services for the community and the schools, partnering and, and co-locating some of our staff members at different agencies. We have two staff members in the emergency department. We have jail services. Those type of things would go away, because those are not covered benefits by these Medicaid health plans. So we really would like to urge you to consider adopting the resolution in opposition of this. Several other county commissioner boards around the state are starting to adopt these as part of our advocacy efforts to begin pushing back against this. I would pause and ask for any questions. And I know my board chair is on the line as well, Irene O'Boyle, so I'm not sure if you have anything you'd like to add to that, Irene. Okay.
I guess I have one question. Does the state feel they can manage this better, or they just basically, they turn it over for the, to the for-profit? I mean, why would they do that? I mean, is it, is it, is it people supporting these guys, or what?
Sure, yeah. So I believe that the general consensus is that this is really is just a money grab to carve back in that approximate $3 billion of the Medicaid benefit into the health plan benefit. What they're proposing is that they would be able to better serve our constituents and our Medicaid beneficiaries by having one person integrated at the financial level, managing both the physical health and the behavioral health benefit, when in reality, we know that that's not accurate. The Medicaid health plans currently manage the mild to moderate benefit, and they've not really been able to produce the same outcomes or be able to manage the behavioral health, even on that mild, moderate side, very effectively. Whereas we have a demonstrated history of being able to manage the severe priority populations served by community mental health agencies. So that's the long answer. The short answer is that it does seem to be a little bit of a money grab. They do think that they would be able to manage it better, though there's no demonstrated evidence of that.
Alrighty, anyone else have any questions?
I would just add to Michelle's comments, and she referred to it a few minutes ago. The state tried to do this a few years ago. They had pilot projects.
298.
And they failed, failed miserably. They, the private healthcare, the private mental healthcare system is nothing but what she said, a money grab. And the state want, the state would rather just push it away and not have to deal with it. Well, we have to deal with it. The people of Gracha County, and we have a lot of underserved people in Gracha County, and this benefits those people, and we have a lot of them, and the sheriff can attest to that. Is, the, the poor sheriff right now is, is a holding cell, unfortunately, for mental, mental, you know, people, and, and that's, and that's got to stop. But if, if we go this direction, it'll, I guarantee you, it's going to get worse. It will. This is a bad thing.
I move, we support this resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bunting. You know, I, I don't know that I have enough information to vote on this, but let's move forward with the motion. Any further discussion on this? Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, nay, because I don't have enough information. Motion passed.
Alright.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Greater Grashit, Jim and Casey. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. After hearing the, our last commission meeting referred to talk about our wind tax calculations, I thought we should put it together. And the reason that it does say preliminary on it right now is there's a couple of corrections that will have to occur. When the calculation was done in both Lafayette and Hamilton Township, there was an error made on the form. Subsequently, it's been caught. But there will have to be some corrections made for that. So hence why you see preliminary on it. But this is what we would consider to be the worst case is the way it would actually shake out. And as you can see, the totals was just a little over 8.3 million dollars is the, what we call the win. Infamous wind tax dollars that come through and then it's spread across all the different entities there. And we've put it in two formats. Chuck put one together last year, so we duplicated Chuck. So we have that. And then we also have the larger format that's grown even larger this year. We've had to go to two sides to do that. Thought you'd be interested in seeing it and give you some idea that the impact for it totals right now cumulatively a little over $57 million that since the beginning of 2012 through 2020. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
I do. When you said that there was a mistake, does that mean they owe us back or we owe, they owe us back?
Well, yes, what will happen on that is that actually the wind companies were overbilled. So the the calculation, there was an error made in it and there'll be some dollars that'll have to go back to them. But right now, Jan, they're in the process of kind of, that has to go to their board reviews to adjust these. And then we'll see what happens with it at that point. So this is our best estimate of where the dollars will actually shake out as. It's a little complicated because of it was a partial year. That's what makes it most complicated. If you remember the rainy season that we had in the end of 19, that's when Polaris, which was the one that was actually in Hamilton, Lafayette and North Star Township. And so it drug over into the following year. You have a partial year. And so there's a formula and calculation that occurs with a project when it's on a partial year. And that's where the error came from.
I see.
Yeah, Jim, Chuck Murphy here. I want to thank you for updating my simpler report. Casey's report is very detailed and very good, but I just thought it would be good. All I was using was the summary numbers to give us up a summary number down the line. But her breakdown is much better.
Yeah, no, it's worked out. Actually Chuck, I've used both of them. Sometimes somebody says, you know, it's like they ask you what time it is, don't tell them how to build a watch. And so sometimes they like it a little simpler and other times the more, you know, detail they want. And so it's worked out really good for us both ways.
And then Jim, I see we're significantly up this year to a total of 8.3 million. Do you show us kind of at a peak or is it going to continue to grow a little better?
Next year should be the peak, Chuck, because what will happen in next year's numbers, the the balance of the Polaris project will come on board. And then all of Grashit Farm Wind, which is the one down in North Shade and 222. That's the way to say it.
New Haven.
I always have a hard time remembering those guys. They're going to be mad at me. New Haven and North Shade, but that project actually got completed all in one year. So next year should be our high watermark, Chuck.
Great.
Jim, John Lemberman here. Are these numbers posted on your guys' website now?
Yes, they are. Yep, they're on our website now. So you can see them. And again, we're going to leave the preliminary on there until we get it all shaken out, know the exact number. Then we'll release the preliminary on it. And we'll just see where it actually goes. You'll know if you see a preliminary one, it's our best estimate of how it's going to end up. But once that drops off and we know the final numbers and just not sure how long it's going to take.
Jim, when that hap, when that happens, will you come back and tell the commissioners?
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy. No, I'll bring it back once we're finally done and give you an update so you'll know. Yep, for final review. But I just thought at least it'd give you a good idea when you talk about it. And I know you've had other people come in and question what some of the numbers are. This gives people a view, even with the $8 million of last year, to understand it isn't 8 million all right to the county. It's 8 million divided in the county amongst these different entities. So that I think it helps give people a little better understanding of how revenues are divided. Then lastly, I thought I just, I put in our, the report, just a little bit of our last year's annual report. Just to give us some idea of, you know, sort of what we'd done last year through the pandemic and going forward. It ended up being, you know, the ZFS never did have their great groundbreaking. We, unfortunately, we, we've never had a ribbon cutting, but I can guarantee you they're crushing a lot of beans. It's at least February 13th of 2020 is when they started and it's run every day since then. But that was a huge project for us. The Polaris Wind Park that was mainly mostly completed Avalon and Apex where we continue, our boat companies continue to go. And these numbers are outdated with them just because of the demand, both of them have felt in the recreational market right now. It's a, you go to boat dealers right now and they, they're like car dealers. They have very little inventory and demanding more, unfortunately. We can only make them as fast as they can. The second page just gives you a little bit. Again, Don Schur get a lot of highlights out of this because he's obviously ran the entity a lot, lot longer than I have. But our projects now in total about $1.3 billion that we've been part of since 1978 of start of Greater Grashit. Which a lot and basically we've, we've either have created or retained about 5,600 jobs. So and those are net jobs. So we, you know, somebody were to go out of business, we don't keep counting the jobs. We only count the ones that are there. That's about 42% of the employment in the county. That we've had in one way or another have affected the entity that the folks work for. And then just a little bit too, we've, you know, talked about had about $614,000 in grant dollars just that we've assisted with in this last year. And then basically for every dollar we get on the millage dollars that we generate through our businesses that have been part of our, our help to be here, just shy of $20 for that. So pretty good return from from that standpoint. Again, you can kind of highlight some of the different things we've talked to and worked with. And obviously a crazy year. We helped three different rounds of grant programs to assist. You know, as we talked earlier, our restaurant businesses and some of those. So definitely been a year that I guess I could say all of us have never been through. But hope I don't ever go through it again, but we've continued to do our best to keep people up. We've, you know, I've been to all four, all sides of the county. We still get out to our different townships for different things that they need and help them in every form and fashion that we can. But be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions? Just one off the wall question for you, Jim. How big is the marijuana industry in Grashit County now? Do you have a feel for that?
You know, that's actually going right now. I believe there's, there, the two, Seville Township has passed it and City of Alma has passed it. And and beyond that, I'm not sure if there's anyone located yet in Seville Township. I'm not positive of that. In Alma, there is one medical dispensary going. There's been a couple that have talked about grow operations and also some of the other subsidiary pieces with that, John. But beyond that, that's the only ones I know. I have no idea on the dollars generated at this point with it. It's been a little sticky situation just because of, you know, who's opted in and who's opted out of it. But that's, that's what my best knowledge of it is right now.
On, on Seville Township, I believe they've licensed two growers, a candy maker, and there's a transporter out there.
Yep, okay.
One of my townships.
Got it. But again, you know, and if I would say, what, you know, probably the biggest thing that, you know, we're still facing right now is, you know, worker shortages and that's really across the board. Pre-pandemic, I'd say it was mostly in manufacturing. Now it's, you see it everywhere. I mean, help wanted signs are just every direction with it. You're seeing some real wage pressures that we've been feeling and training, everything we can do now. It's really starting to come home. Couple of projects that we have started working with too, and some of the downtown development things. That in particular Gemini Capital, Ryan Smith's been working on that. We've done three brownfield projects for him in different downtowns to help with additional housing and support. Because that's basically what you have to take a look at is attract and keep talent in your area. Obviously they need places to live. They need good schools. They need all the other pieces that, that quality of life and things bring. So that's been one of our huge focuses.
Bill, on the employment issue, I had heard that they've taken away the $300 extra bonus. Are you aware of that?
I'm not sure at this point. I, the last I saw, I wasn't sure Michigan has or not yet, Chuck.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if it's accurate or not. I was getting my oil changed and they said all of a sudden they had six people come in looking for jobs and they couldn't find anything. And they said, they thought it was that. So I was just wondering.
It could be. I mean, there's no doubt about it that, you know, I mean, I think it depends on sometimes people's political perspective. But obviously the more dollars that people tend to get, it's been a drag back. But not all of it's been that too, especially females, you know, with schools and the situations where all of a sudden you're in school, you're out of school, childcare has been just a nightmare for people. See, Audra Stahl's still on here and, you know, she talks about it too all the time about how difficult childcare is. And that's really become a real, real hassle. I guess, well, obviously Chuck, you see it in the schools there where you get kids in or kids out. And all of a sudden, you know, the childcare side of it becomes a disaster. So it's, it's a number of things we're going to have to continue to work with, but not easy problems to solve, to say the least.
Jim, this is Sam. Have you heard anything on an investigation that apparently is going on with windmill funds?
Investigation?
Yeah.
No, I, the only thing that, you know, like I've had with, with that is, you know, we track the tax dollars and, you know, like we had the error that we had, but it wasn't, I wouldn't view that at all as any kind of investigation. The only other type of thing, you know, there's legislative information, you know, things that with the tax tribunal that we're waiting on a decision that could potentially impact us greatly there that, you know, Tracy's been very much in, in, in the middle of with being on the executive committee of the EMRAK. But no, I've heard of no, none whatsoever of any kind of investig, investigation at all.
Alright, thank you.
Alrighty, any other questions? Alrighty, thank you, Jim and Casey.
Thanks for, yeah, I'll, I'll take the thank you, but Casey should take all the credit. She, she spends a lot of time with us. So thanks very much.
Yep, keep her on board there, Jim.
Got that right.
Alrighty, next on the agenda, some requests for funds under the American Rescue Plan. Dan, you have the first request here on some police radios?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to, can we get a, can we hear them from there or do we want them up here?
You'll need to move forward. You get too much of an echo otherwise.
Okay, great. I think that's good.
I don't mind. I've got my shots. I come before the board tonight. Back in 2018, when I became involved with 911, with all the other capital improvements and projects, I identified that Grashit County law enforcement, as well as fire service, need a replacement of radios. The fire service has been able to move greatly in doing that on their own. Law enforcement is still there, operating on portable radios and mobile radios that are 10 years or older. I had an opportunity here, not quite about two weeks ago, I got a phone call out of the blue from a radio service provider that we could take advantage basically of Motorola because a unknown community, he won't even share who it is with me, which I understand, but a community here in Michigan ordered over 100 radios for portable radios, basically with a lot of the bells and whistles, but Motorola didn't get a signature on it. Motorola produced them and they delivered them and the community refused delivery. They're stuck with them. So Motorola is looking to get rid of them. These are brand new radios. So hence the opportunity that you have before you through ProCom is Motorola is willing to sell these at a 50% or greater discounted rate. So it's 107 radios and we would be looking at acquiring at least 75 of those. We'd acquire all 107 and there's an agreement with ProCom where ProCom would acquire the balance of them above 75 from the county, get them back and then ProCom.
You're asking the board for the full amount for 107 is what you're asking for?
For all 100.
And then we will get reimbursed.
Correct.
The other leftover of.
32 radios.
So we'll get reimbursement.
You know, in these radios, these are law enforcement specific radios. That's what they were manufactured to become. The big thing that I focus on, which I tend to focus on technical stuff, but is encryption. The levels of encryption that are already built into these radios, one is a big chunk of change already to begin with. I mean, that's $800 just to add that feature to a radio and encryption is coming. That's just, that's just all that there is to it with criminal justice, information services and things like that. So this is a great way for our county to get out in front. Having spoke with the sheriff just last week, he's had a couple of radios already failed, the portable radios that they have. These are, the old radios are XTS 2500s. And like I said, they're just long in the tooth. They're long in the tooth. They are no longer supported. One breaks. If ProCom doesn't have the spare parts locally, that's it. That radio is just dead. And so he's out a radio. And if you wanted to replace it with its modern comparable radio, you know, like you're looking at them in these prices, you'd be looking at well over $5,000, you know, for, per radio. So.
Can you break down what the entities would be?
Basically what we're looking to do is the breakout for the 75 radios. And these are kind of rough figures, but Sheriff's Office, about 30 radios, Alma Police Department, 15, St. Louis Police Department, 16, Breckenridge Police Department, 4, 911, 5, and Office of Emergency Management, 5. That gets us to 75. And we can adjust those numbers around if the Sheriff's Office needs a few more or whatever and stuff like that.
I'm sorry, Irene.
No, no, go ahead.
Question, you say 75. You say this is all where all the radios are going to go. In that figure, is there any spares?
Well, that's.
Or are they all being used?
Well, emergency management, you only have one person in there. He wouldn't need all five. Those would be some spares.
You're looking at, my point was if you get one going down, you got another one to replace it.
Right. And that's sheriff, how many do you?
Ideal number for me would be at least 35, Dan.
35, okay.
And we probably take 40 because a lot of us take them home and also have them at the office. I mean, I'll bring them back to Florida.
So we want to update that to 40?
Yeah, it's, I mean, we can, like I said, we're going to be purchasing. Yeah, we're going to be purchasing 107. And basically what is not needed, even including some spares, once we work it out and stuff like that, we will be able to resell back.
We've got an opportunity right now. I just don't want you to shortchange yourself.
Right.
That's a good point, George. Thank you.
We have some regular, we will run order and we're getting 107 and then we can decide how many we want.
And and the urgency. Yeah, and, and the urgency to this is, is that Motorola, because this, when we'd be, we'd be signing this contract with ProCom or the county would be signing this contract with ProCom, but it's directly, it's a direct sale from Motorola. Let's put a deadline on this of June 18th.
Dan and Mr. Chair, if I could speak to the funding mechanics of this, please?
Go ahead.
Um, I want to be clear that under the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, the county with its funds may quote transfer funds to a special purpose unit of state or local government. Uh, Central Dispatch Authority would qualify as a special purpose unit of local government. So what you would be doing is simply providing the funding to Central Dispatch. And Dan, it's you folks that would be signing the contract. We're just providing you the funding to pay for it. So that's why this falls under a request for ARP funds. And so you are approving or not use of the funds and then Dan would give you the, uh, the precise amount of the request.
And I don't know if anybody would have any questions also about like the tie-in to COVID, because obviously the American Rescue Plan, it's all about COVID. But it's, it's communications. It's being able to talk to our first.
That is the language that authorizes you.
Yeah. Okay.
Wanted to put that out there publicly that it's, it's, you know, it's, it's more than just radios. It's enabling our first responders to be able to react to the pandemic as well as future things.
And what would you estimate the life of these radios, useful life?
Uh, given the current what we've gotten, I, I would say at least safely 10 years, at least safely 10 years. Um, well maintained, well cared for, 15. Um, but the problem is those that, everything, you took the words right out of my mouth, Mr. Murphy. Um, you know, radios are more and more be, becoming computers and less, you know, something that you push to talk, you know, and stuff like, it's, it's networks. Um, you know, but safely you should be at, you know, 10 years. The, the encryption, uh, going, kind of tying into that, the technology, AES encryption, which is listed in there, is the highest standard of level of encryption that is available within the United States. Um, AES encryption is military grade encryption. Um, in order to break that, it's a nation's, the way it's been explained to me is it's a nation state. They would have to sit down and crunch in order to be able to break that.
Dan, I have a couple of questions. Now, these radios will be good on the outside of the whole county? Or do you still need an antenna to be able to get out, out make, or parts of the?
These, these radios will enable law enforcement to communicate statewide.
Oh, really?
They will, yep. They, they will be on the Michigan Public Safety Communication System Network. Um, the antenna that you're discussing is a, a separate capital project that I do have identified that would enable communications improvements within buildings. Um, what, what we have in short, short of a deputy taking in their big mobile radio with an antenna hanging over their shoulder, going inside a building, portable radios in buildings such as hospitals, schools that are very heavily, the radio signals just don't penetrate that well. Um, exactly, yeah. A lot of stone, a lot of steel, uh, it just, it defeats it. Um, but, uh, and then putting a antenna and a repeater on top of a building improves that because it's basically it's wattage, you're pushing more energy. So, uh, and that's, and that's the capital project that, uh, you and I have spoke about individually before. So yeah, it won't, these portable radios will not improve communications within hardened structures. But it will improve longevity and capabilities throughout the county for all of law enforcement, as well as it'll secure their communications.
Okay, another question I had too was, um, the old radios that you have, you sell those to someone else or keep them as a backup or?
What I would like to do is, in my plan, and I've, uh, discussed, or I've emailed the, uh, law enforcement executives in the county, is I would like to create a cache. Um, largely this would be, this was, I'm stepping out of my wheelhouse now because, you know, I'm not, I'm the 911 director. So I can't speak for Mike Soltis and the sheriff for Office of Emergency Management. But to help us in the event of a disaster, we should collect the old radios, create a cache of them and then have them available through the Office of Emergency Management.
That's great.
You know, and, you know, and then we're not really out, I mean, if we have a disaster, if we have the bad black day here, black cloud day here in Grashit County, and we have people that respond to our area that do not have the exact same communications radio network, you can say, here you go. You know, now you can talk to us and, and here's the channel that you operate on. Um, if those radios eventually break and die, we're not out so much, but it, it would be nice to have that cache of radios.
Essentially, the radios would be, they're limited to Grashit County, there are frequencies on them. For us to sell them to somebody and have them redo them would be cost efficient for another jurisdiction.
And, and again, most agencies probably wouldn't even buy them anyways, because they know that they're being buying something that is past end of life. Uh, the current portable radios were end of life in 2018, 19. So.
It sounds like you have a much better plan for them.
Oh, yeah. For the, for the old ones, yeah. It's, you know, I mean, just, I, I believe in a level of redundancy, you know, and, and, you know, giving us something.
I'm going back to the antenna. Have you, are you putting that on hold or is that something?
It's not on hold. Um, it's, it's something that's identified and I'm, I'll wait for the commissioners, I'll wait for the board and through county administration, however that wants to be presented to the board. That's, that's kind of where I want to leave that, because I've got several other capital projects that I've identified, working with the sheriff's office, emergency management, um, you know, and stuff like that. So, um, there's ideas out there. And I'm sure that mine, along with the sheriff's office, aren't the ones, I don't want to steal that time.
I think it sounds like we should deal with this issue, but it sounds good that you're working on some other plans to bring back to us.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
Dan, with the county, you're providing radios for the city of Alma or would they be reimbursing you?
Uh, they would not be reimbursed. If we use the ARP funds, that would be the county's dollar paying for Alma, uh, St. Louis, Breckenridge.
They're all getting those funds too.
Uh, from what I've understood, Breckenridge is not. Um, that, that was something that, uh, I've been in contact pretty regularly with Jim Durham, the chief of police out there. And after speaking to his clerk, they said, no, you need to go to the township, the township.
Because they're a part of the township.
Yeah.
Incorporated village, aren't they?
That's what I thought too. And I thought that basically everybody that's incorporated, I don't know, I, I am not a lawyer and I am not an expert on the, um, I would defer to Tracy to be the subject matter expert on American Rescue.
Well, I don't present as a lawyer, but the, you know, the, the language of the act is that, uh, these villagers just don't, uh, qualify for this funding. They're not receiving, uh, funding and they rely on their, uh, presence in a township. So yes, uh, townships are, uh, also receiving funding as are the cities, like everybody has big plans. Uh, the county's, um, allotment of ARP fundings is, uh, much greater than any of the other local government unit.
Um, you know, something that was passed by the 911 authority that in lieu of, if the county opts not to use ARP funding for this, the 911 authority would make the purchase with its own surcharge dollars. And then we would do a reimbursement basis from each of the individual, individual locals. But that's also where that came into a problem for Breckenridge, because Breckenridge does not have the funding within their current operating budget. So I would have to gnaw on the 911 authority and say, okay, hey, instead of the 911 authority buying four or five radios, I need to buy 10. And then next year, I'll sell some to Jim Durham.
This, this sounds like a great use of the funds, so I would be in favor.
One more question for you. What about the fire department and ambulances? Do they use the same frequency that you guys do or is that a different?
There are a lot of, what's, the term is interoperable. There are a lot of interoperable frequencies. Um, mobile medical response, which is your ambulance service, they provide their own radios because they are a private, not-for-profit entity. So they provide their own radios. Um, the fire services, the fire districts, they provide their own radios. Um, there are now is only two, uh, fire services that no longer, that do not have the 800 megahertz of this nature. Um, one has already made, uh, movement in budgeting, which is, uh, the new Grashit Emergency Services Authority, uh, basically Ithaca Fire Department. Uh, Chief Nelson has budgeted to acquire radios. Um, the only entity, uh, which, and my heart's still with them, but down in Sam's district is Parenton. Um, Parenton.
I think you're going to move into that. I think you're going to move into the. Talk is anyway.
Yeah, that's, you know, Parenton needs to get on the network. Um, they, they are not yet there. Uh, and they just, you know, it's, it's funding. But they'll get there. But yeah, that's, these, these kinds of radios for all of the emergency services helps us to be able to talk to each other without any heavy lifting.
Tracy, uh, have we received half of these funds yet?
Yeah, we've got the 3.9 million or so that is securely in our accounts. Ready to buy radios, ready to provide Central Dispatch to.
Do this, uh, with the reimbursement coming back for the radios that we end up selling off. So we have to purchase 80 of them, whatever, take them all and if you sell some back out, then we'd be reimbursed for it.
So I think we're looking for what, a motion for the 267, 499, 85? I have a motion, Commissioner Bunting, a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Bailey. Uh, any further discussion?
So there is a, uh, $250 per radio.
That's an activation fee. So the state requires that activation fee and.
So 250 times 107, if we were taking off 107.
Right.
Because this price is for all 107.
Boy, that is a good catch.
Is that another 25,000, you say, 26?
It'd be 250 times 107, um, or whichever ones that we actually decided. So, you know, like, uh, you know, George said, you know, 80 radios and it would be 250 times 80.
This is, so the, the 267.5 plus 26.750 would be if we were taking all 107.
Right. You know, the 267, 499, 85 is the actual purchase of the equipment.
Twenty thousand.
Plus, plus 20 or 25,000, right?
No, it's still, it's still a huge save.
Oh, God.
So are we looking for an addition on that motion of another 25,000 for the activation?
I would appreciate that and I have to thank.
Well, you gotta activate. We can't buy them without activating.
So we're looking at another, uh.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, you think it's enough?
Yeah.
What's the total of that for them, please? We'll need that, Dan.
Hundred and. I think 107 by 250 is 20.
Like, even if we activated 100, that'd be 25,000.
We do that. Why would we activate them? We're only using 80. Sell the other ones.
Are you willing to approve up to $300,000?
Yeah, that's easier.
Yeah.
Let's break it that way.
Thank you.
Tracy, my only question is, you're, you're meeting with the, the heads of all the rest of the community governments. And like Sam said, was there any talk of like Alma or Ithaca or any of these other jurisdictions using their own stimulus money for their own portion of this?
No, I, I don't, I don't know if, if they would or wouldn't. My meeting so far with the other managers has been all about broadband.
And they don't have us. They only got 200 and some thousand, but we're, we're almost got eight million, so.
So.
And I don't want to have to take their money away from their projects if they really, you know, need something.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Um, so is there some additional language, uh, Tracy, we need for the, uh, special use? You, you mentioned in the motion?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so. I, I, I mean, it could be. I, I, I would suggest that your motion be an approval for, let me get back to that slide. Approval of up to $300,000 to the Central Dispatch Authority, which qualifies as a special purpose unit of local government.
Angie, you've got all that.
Tracy, was that acceptable as a, an amendment in the second?
Yeah.
Okay. One more question. Um, so the funds, if we're approving up to 300,000, but 20% of the money is going to come back because we're, we're going to sell 20% of the radios away. Would that money go into the general fund or would it go back into the, uh, ARP fund?
That's on how we structure it. And I think that with your approval of up to $300,000, we have all the flexibility in the world, uh, to deal with this. My, my suggestion, my recommendation would be, uh, that that would simply be an amount that we would not allot. But it gives us time to sit down and, because I hadn't heard about this activation fee and forgive me, Dan, if you told me and I just didn't hear it, but.
No, I, I did.
Excuse me. It allows us to just do all of this arithmetic and, um.
Figure it out later.
Yep.
To first figure it out later.
Alrighty, any further discussion? All those in favor?
You want to call? For spending money.
Yeah, we should do, alright, let's call the roll. Thank you, George.
Commissioner Bailey.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Great.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Great find. Alrighty, uh, next on the agenda, uh, we have a presentation by the KESA, um, another, uh.
That's CASA, uh, Chuck. I, I'll do a quick introduction for you.
Okay.
Um, I had, uh, heard about, I'm very familiar with CASA. I served on its board many years ago in, uh, in Oregon. These organizations are in ports, uh, all over the country. Uh, I'd heard a presentation through the Rotary Club that, uh, referenced, uh, the, uh, upcoming funding difficulties for CASA. And then, um, we all read about it in the newspaper and, um, so I, we just set up a phone call, a, a few of us, Michelle Zombek and uh, others, and just talked about the issue. Um, I, I said to these folks that, um, helping, helping to bridge the gap in funding, uh, is a qualified use of American Rescue Plan Act funds, specifically that these funds may be used to promote healthy childhood environments, also to address health disparities and the social determinants of health. And we know that, um, numerous studies that relate, uh, these childhood environments, social determinants of health, um, uh, in, in these situations. But anyway, um, so that's how we got here. So then the, the pitch is to be made to you, uh, from our CASA folks, court-appointed special advocates, CASA. Uh, if this board would serve, uh, provide ARP funds, uh, for bridge funding for this, folks. Uh, I believe these folks will tell you, I think it's about $135,000, uh, hoping you would approve that amount or whatever amount they tell you, uh, for three fiscal years. Uh, so we have Michelle Zombak, who I believe is the program director. Audra Stoll is, uh, 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 what, what is, is the, uh, top of the, uh, the, uh, the org chart. And then of course Judge Barker has a great deal to do, uh, with, uh, the CASA program and referrals. So, uh, Judge, Michelle, Audra, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to come and present to you this evening. Um, we appreciate the opportunity. Um, if I may, I would like to, um, share my screen and I provided, um, a kind of brief presentation about CASA, a little bit about what's going on and kind of the crisis that has come upon us.
We got it. We got it. You're on.
Yay, okay, thank you very much. So Making Their Voices Heard is the campaign we've been working on to try and promote the awareness about CASA of Grashit County. CASA is housed under child advocacy. We are an umbrella organization that has four major programs. We have the Grashit County Substance and Suicide Coalition. We have the Children's Advocacy Center, and we also have the Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Program. Today specifically, I'm going to be talking to you about CASA. The need that we have, the crisis that we're looking at, and how we feel that the American Rescue Plan, we can partner together to make some more positive outcomes for our community. So in nineteen seventy seven, bottom line, it started with a judge who felt that he wasn't giving enough information, and he was making decisions for children and didn't know if he was making the right decisions. So with that, he came up with this idea of putting some folks together in a room to see if they would be interested in kind of keeping an eye on kids and sharing with the court the information that they found. We are very thankful that this happened because we've truly seen amazing things that have happened. So CASA Volunteer, again, stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. And what that means is they're volunteers who are everyday citizens that go through a very specialized training, forty, forty hours of specialized training, and they become empowered to advocate on behalf of children who are involved in abuse and neglect court proceedings in our community. These volunteers aren't just anyone. We are very rigorous with the process that we go through in order to allow a volunteer to work with children. They're interviewed and screened and thoroughly background checked, including centralized intake registry to see if they're on that as well. So during this unique training, we create a foundation for these volunteers to meet with children. What's a little bit unique about our program is every week, our children are in, interacting with this particular assigned volunteer. Whereas some of our paid professionals are simply not able, due to the overabundance of work that they have, to meet with these children is, is often. You're looking at a caseworker probably one to two times per month, and the child's attorney probably around once per quarter on average. So what are volunteers actually doing? They're learning as much as possible about the children, their family, the circumstances. They engage with those children, they talk to them, and they find out what it is that's going on in that child's life. They find out what it is their wishes are. Sometimes we talk a lot about what's going on in the parents' lives, but we also ask the child, is there a message that you would like the court to hear on your behalf? We make recommendations after talking to the children and talking to all the people that are involved in the case. The teachers, the therapists, the counselors, the caseworkers, the family, the daycare, medical professionals, all of those folks. And with that, we collaborate. We collaborate with our partner agencies to try and make the transition for these families as seamless as possible. So we're working with the Department of Health and Human Services. We're working with Grashit Integrated Health Network, and we're working with our school system. Approximately every three months, we go to court and we create a formalized court report. Much of the documents that are provided to the court are black and white, you know, the things that have to be reported upon. I always say that we put the color in the report. We're sharing the stories, the things that might not normally be heard about, but we're in the home weekly, so we're able to share some of that information. So our court system and Judge Barker is able to make a better decision on behalf of these children. So these are some statistics that we have pulled together for you, so you're a little bit more aware of kind of what we're looking at. So in our most recent census in twenty nineteen, you're looking at approximately seventy eight hundred children that are under the age of seventeen. So what that boils down to when you're looking at abuse and neglect in Grashit County, you can see that in twenty nineteen, numbers were much higher. Obviously, we didn't have a global pandemic. But in twenty twenty, our kids were behind closed doors. They weren't around as many mandated reporters. So those numbers are down. The confirmed cases in twenty twenty were a hundred and seventy five, and those are the, are the, because of the courage of people who were able to pick up that phone. Sometimes people do not know how or do not know where to begin to actually make a phone call when they suspect abuse and neglect. Of those a hundred and seventy five, we have forty six percent of those children that are five and under. This is where Make Their Voices Heard really is important. Because obviously, a child that's five and under cannot, you know, create a report. They're not, may not be able to articulate exactly what's going on in their lives. So that's why we have weekly encounters and participate with all the people that are involved in their lives, so we can report our observations and share with what's going on. So looking at our Children's Advocacy Center, this gives us an indication as to what may be going on in the future. So as of right now, in twenty twenty, oh, twenty twenty one, I'm sorry, from January to May, we're seeing that we're already at ninety two interviews completed, and what that includes is allegations of sexual abuse, physical abuse, neglect, witness to violence, and/or drug endangerment. Some, if not many of those, will go through the courtroom and potentially be a case that where CASA will be requested to be involved. Our volunteers put many, many hours that are invaluable. Nationally, the volunteer hour is worth over twenty eight dollars an hour. And since twenty nineteen alone, we've saved our county through services and support and observation over a hundred and twenty six, almost a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. In twenty twenty one, still working on the end of a pandemic, hopefully, we already have five hundred and ninety one hours that our volunteers have provided. Now, this is thinking about, many of us were concerned about our own health and well-being during this global pandemic. We had volunteers that were concerned about the safety and well-being of the children that they were assigned. They never skipped a beat. They continued on. They found creative and innovative ways to interact and to make sure that their child's voice was heard. It was truly amazing to see the, the resiliency that these casework, or these CASA volunteers had in advocating for their children. Even though we're working very, very hard to try and address the need in Grashit County, at this current point, we're only serving approximately twenty four percent of the demand. We need more CASAs, and I'm proud to say that we've just began another training. So we did, we have done two, two volunteer trainings during this pandemic. So this is where our commissioners and our county come in. We need your help. On the average, you're looking at approximately a hundred and seventy thousand that we need to run our program. Due to unforeseen circumstances that we were not privy to until not very long ago, we are going to be losing our Victim of Crime dollars, which has supported us the last couple of years in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and just over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We also receive donations and a donation match that we have from another entity. So we're looking at the loss, primary loss of our budget. And so the Victim of Crime Act dollars, bottom line, there's not enough money to go around. The pot has shrunk. Prosecution is down from what has happened over the last couple administrations, and therefore, the, there's just simply not enough dollars to go around. We feel that the American, I'm, whoops, sorry. I was trying to move my, my screen here. We feel that the American Rescue Plan and Court Appointed Special Advocates can very well work together in the areas, as Tracy had mentioned, serving the hardest-hit communities and families. We help promote healthy childhood environments as we go into the home and are working specifically with children and families. We are working on services to support children and families that are involved in foster care. We are one of the only agencies in this community that offer the unique services that we're able to provide. And we are a proven solution. These are some of our CASA volunteers that are, you may know and recognize. We actually are, do have one of our CASA volunteers with us today, Jennifer Lapine. But we go through a very rigorous standards and compliance process with National CASA and Michigan CASA. So we're not just some program out there, you know, doing what we feel is right. We actually have compliance and are being checked on and reporting very consistently. Statistically, it's shown that ninety five percent of children with a CASA volunteer stay out of long-term foster care, which is a huge number. They have significantly less placements. They're more and less likely to reenter the child welfare system. So we really believe that with our services, children are also supported in finding a, a, a forever permanent home much quicker as well. Volunteers come from all walks of life. What's special about them is that they believe in children and believe that children have a right to grow in a happy and healthy home. So we're here today to ask for your support and help us fund the next three years by allowing this program to continue and for us to advocate on behalf of some of our community's most vulnerable children. They truly need our support, and we hope that you can help us continue with our program because we are, we are working very hard and have been working very hard to find other funding sources. We've been working with our legislators. We've been working with National CASA and Michigan CASA. We've, are applying for grants. We just completed a fundraising campaign, but we're just not where we need to be to continue the program in the fashion that we would like.
Judge Barker, Judge Barker, do you have thoughts and can you make a contribution on the value of the program in your court? Maybe just start with that and any other comments you might have prepared.
Absolutely. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you about CASA. Michelle says that CASA brings color to reports. I'm just gonna flip my camera up. You can all see my mantle in my office. You might recognize some of that fine art that I, I paid a great price for at their normal fundraiser in most years, and I enjoy it every day. It reminds me when I come to work. I am very supportive of the idea that CASA would continue in Grashit County. We have, right now, an unprecedented number of children out, out of home in foster care. We have an unprecedented number of kids who are the subject of neglect petitions. That isn't a result necessarily of the pandemic. It is a result of certainly the drug epidemic in our community and a variety of other things, just in general, poverty and some other things that have been happening. I think when I last looked at the numbers, I had over thirteen, normally around forty children in care. It was close to fifty three the last time I looked. And so again, the numbers continue to grow. Those kids that are coming into care are really high needs. They, and what I mean by that is physical needs, emotional needs, educational needs, medical needs, dental needs, and CASA provides just a wealth of support behind the scenes for me as a judge. Because these folks are really your super volunteers. I mean, these people commit to a child or a group of children for the, for the long haul. The idea is that many of these cases will last anywhere between a year to two years before we get to the end of returning or reunifying families or potentially permanency for children. And so these CASA volunteers visit with these kids every week. They stay up on all those details that no one else would have the capacity to follow as thoroughly and supportively. And I, I just think they provide an invaluable resource to these cases. So I totally support the request that's being made. I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of the court and would defer to any of the others who are here, Audra and Jennifer, if they have additional thoughts or things they'd like for me to comment on.
Jennifer, Audra, anything you would add?
Hi, this is Jennifer. I was giving Audra a moment to unmute herself, but I will go ahead and check.
Back in the room, yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity. I am Jennifer Lapine. I am a CASA volunteer, and I have been for many years. One of the first group of volunteers to be sworn in in our court. It's a valuable program. I can tell you it's a program I do not wish to stop volunteering for, as well as the other volunteers that are actively participating right now. It's a, it's a program that we need to keep in our community, and I fully support it. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would, sorry, you guys caught me walking. My, my daughter's here for a visit, and her dog is here, and I was trying to escape the dog so that it wasn't barking on the, on Zoom. But anyway, yes, thank you, guys. So thank you all so much for your time. Tracy, thank you for coordinating and organizing this. Michelle did a wonderful job explaining what CASA is. It's a very important program to child advocacy. We have worked so hard to get the program to meet national standards and the standards of Michigan CASA and the standards of Judge Barker's court at that, you know, as well. We try so hard to just provide such a wonderful program, and it's heartbreaking for us to think that it could possibly go away because of these federal funding cuts. So we have been scrambling, trying to figure out, you know, how to keep this program. Tracy came up with maybe this possible solution, and I just appreciate everyone listening and considering helping us save this really critical program. So thank you.
Circling back around to you, Michelle, you threw out a number, I think it was a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty four dollars, or some such thing. Rounding up, would you be asking this board for, I'm gonna round up, a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars starting by or on October one of this year? And then, because we, we don't know if you're gonna find the federal funds, again, on October one of twenty twenty two, and then again on October one of twenty twenty three. That's a three-year ask. Is that what you are asking this board?
I didn't catch it.
Yes, thank you, Tracy. That is what we're asking for, and I will reiterate that we, if we are granted these funds, we will not stop looking for alternative funds. It is our mission to sustain this program because we believe in what we do. And so, yes, to answer your question, we, at this point, we are asking for a three-year ask of approximately a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to facilitate that. I'll do my best to sit here quietly now.
Alright, thank you. Any, any questions from anyone on this?
I just want to clarify.
Wait a minute, could we have the sheriff wants to make a statement?
As a member of the Child Advocacy Board, this program is very important to Child Advocacy. And just making a recommendation that you guys listen to what they're saying, because when I was detective, Child Advocacy was near and dear to my heart. It was one of my passions, and it's a great program. Thank you.
I would just like to say that I'm a, a great supporter of child advocacy. I'm Jan Bunting. I'm sitting, in the summertime, I sit in on your meetings, and also a paraprof for the schools. And I've seen some of the work that you have, you have accomplished, so I think you do a great job. And I'd also, instead of going a hundred and thirty one thousand, like to see us go a hundred and thirty five thousand for a little extra that you might need or not have to worry about it, if that's agreeable with the rest of the world.
So, so we have a motion for a hundred and thirty five thousand for three years, Jan?
Yes, three years.
That's every year.
Yes.
Every year for three years.
Every year for three years.
Is there a second to that?
I'll support that.
A second by Commissioner Bailey. Before we go on, I'm also a parapro and know the need for this. And it's an excellent program. I was sitting eating lunch at Loose Road and I saw your promotion sitting in a basket. And thanks for the candy bars.
You're welcome.
And I certainly would support this. Any further questions?
Michelle, could you just give a, like maybe an example of a specific child that if there's trouble in the home and the child, just, would you just tell, tell like a story of what happens and how long it usually takes for it to happen?
Sorry, I, I'm an emotional person. I'm not going to lie. This is an emotional subject. So we've had so many different cases. One that comes to mind is when we had a circumstance where the case originated in Gratchit County and how a parent relocated out of the county. And with that, our volunteers, they follow the case wherever it goes, whether it's Chiawas, Saganow. Our, our CASA volunteers follow those kids. That is one of the most important things, is continuity, the giving a child consistency because many of our children do not have that. So they follow from start, or start to finish. So in this particular circumstance, the parent had some mental health issues as well as some substance issues. And due to the relationship that that particular CASA volunteer had with this family, she went, had gone into the schools and become quite familiar with the school and the school had it as well. Multiple days had gone by when the children were not in attendance of school. And so this particular school district couldn't, for whatever reason, didn't have the caseworker's phone number or I can't remember the, the exact reason, but they couldn't get ahold of anyone except for the CASA. It was at a point where law enforcement was called and law enforcement was able to communicate with our CASA volunteer to kind of triangulate what needed to happen to support these children and to prevent them from going back into care. A different care because again, this was in a different county. So these children were actually able to go back into the home. A, a removal did have to happen, emergency removal. And they were able to go back into the home where they were familiar with after reunification happened. And this CASA volunteer was there by these children's side as this transition happened, as a familiar face and a person that could offer companionship and love and understanding. Does that answer your question?
And I'd like to say too, that as a paraprof, both of us, Mr. Murphy and myself can certainly admit that we work with children, we do one-on-one with children that have had serious problems in their home. And it's very, very hard, very emotional. I can tell you that there's days where I think, you know, you just want to, you try to figure out how you could take this child and bring it home and, and you can't. And there's also a lot of children that fall through the cracks because, you know, they're quiet, they don't, they don't say nothing until they get higher into a grade like junior high. And then you realize that these children haven't learned, you know, things that they should have been learning, but they've fallen through the cracks. And so it's, it's very emotional. I, I can understand where you're coming from and the help that you need. And I'm glad that I'm a paraprof and can help a little bit in the schools.
And I'd like to say we're seeing more and more need of this every year, it seems like.
We'd love to work ourselves out of a job, but unfortunately we don't see that happening. And our true mission is to be able to provide a volunteer for every child in need and we're actively working on that, so.
I will be back online probably starting your next meeting because our school year ends this week for where, where I'm working at. And so I hope to be back on your meetings and anyway I can help, I'd be glad to do that too.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any further questions? Since we're spending money and Tracy, do we have any special language we ought to have with this one or is this pretty clear?
The, Michelle included the language in her PowerPoint presentation. It's promoting the healthy childhood environments and addressing health disparities and the social determinants of health. This is under the category of serving hardest-hit communities and families. So I will ask that this particular slide that Michelle provided be placed in the packet in support of this motion. And I believe that that will take care of it.
Very good. Angie, you have that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Then let's call for a vote. All those and, oh no, should we have, we should have a roll call. Go ahead.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Very good. Thank you all for coming to the meeting tonight. Excellent use of the money.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is Judge Barker.
All right. Very good. Next item, stipend for the medical examiner. Who's handling that? Tracy, you handling that?
Uh, is the sheriff still there?
Oh, the sheriff's going to handle it? Okay, very good.
Or I can jump in, Sheriff. I, I thought you might want to.
I can. So we just trained some more medical examiners here for Gratchit County and we have two independent medical examiners, independent people that we've had trained last week for this. And I'm just looking for an amount to pay them as a stipend if they come out and handle a medical examiner's case. My officers generally handle them, but in certain cases, if we don't have somebody available, we can call upon one of these two gentlemen to come out and handle a medical examiner's case. It's usually around a four-hour job. And Commissioner Smith and I had had some preliminary talks about a, a set fee of $125 per call for these independent MEIs and that's what we're looking for. And if Tracy, if you got anything to chime in with on that, that'd be great.
No, just to say that the mechanics of this are that it would be paid from accounts payable and there is sufficient funding, we believe, in the medical examiner budget line. I say we assume just because you don't know how many of these calls you'll have and how often you'll have to draw from this. But it's our belief that there's sufficient funding and that money would not be, need to be moved around to provide this stipend.
That's all I got.
George? What qualifications do these folks have?
What, what we have is one of them is a former police officer up north. He's now a reserve officer in Breckenridge. And the other gentleman is a lieutenant with Michigan Department of Corrections. So they both have some law, medical side background. They went through a four-hour training with medical examiner Dr. Hunter last week on how to do this and what to look for. And obviously, as officers, we will still be there for suspicious death, but you have to have that independent medical examiner side to handle these.
Well, I was just looking for some.
Yep.
Their, their qualifications.
Yep. Yeah, we just didn't go recruit off the street, so.
Dr. Hunter probably wouldn't let anybody in that he didn't feel was qualified.
Sheriff, do, do you know if your guys were called out today and if there would be a stipend paid today if approved?
Right now, until we had this approved, I, I wouldn't call any of the independents out. We would rely on my officers to do it until we got this mechanism in place.
Okay. I, I was just going to suggest, I think it would be important to have a starting date for this if, if the board approves it. And you could select either today, June 1, or tomorrow, June 2, because we're prepared.
How about if we start like next Monday, Tracy? That way it's at the beginning of a pay period for, for the county and then you guys could have, be prepared to do that if need be.
Works for me if the board approves, certainly. So that's effective June 7.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve this medical examiner investigation of $125 when called out, taken from accounts payable, starting June 7, 2021.
Motion by Commissioner Bunting. Do we have a second? Support, support from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor? I?
Oh yeah, it's money.
All right, go ahead. Angie?
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Okay, next thing. We're moving on to the consideration of the local emergency declaration.
This is your issue, Commissioner Murphy.
Yeah, I just would like us to consider, I'd like to have us get back to normal as much as we can. And I've had some people request that we do something on this. I can't make a motion on this, but I would like to see the local emergency declaration withdrawn immediately. Motion by Commissioner Bunting. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Discussion.
My concern is that every little entity below us that has to have meeting in person to have enough people to be a quorum, as to wherever you have the veterans grouping them and they can't meet as a, you know, there's still people that don't want to be in the same room with each other. What are we, 40%, 45% vaccinated, just sending this county? And it, and it'll drive all these other little commissions to have to meet, have a quorum in public or to meet face-to-face. It still gives them, it doesn't hurt us at all. It gives them the opportunity. We're all here. It gives the other little boards below, I don't know, below us, but that, that we kind of oversee or that are part of the county. They're stuck in meeting face-to-face and there's a lot of folks that don't want to do that still. And so I don't think it hurts just to leave it alone until the end of the year, what the governor said. If they want to operate how they want to operate, let them do it.
I think you're using a 40% figure, but that's, that's using every citizen, including the children in the county, which we just had testified that it's 7,500 according to the census. And, you know, there's nothing approved for them. I think the vaccination rate among, oh, the over 65 group is over 70%, I believe, as I remember. So I, I would just like to see us move back to more normality and get the public more involved in the meetings again.
Everywhere I go, you don't see people wearing masks anymore, like the grocery store, the churches, of course. And a lot of the meetings I've gone to, they don't wear a mask.
Well, the issue before us is allowing people to do and have freedom to do what they need to do. If you send the emergency order, that says to every public entity in the county, which includes a many, many entities, the Mental Health Board, Commission on Aging Board, all of your other types of boards, your cities, your townships, they would all have to go back to in-person meetings to ensure a quorum. That's taking the whole Gratchit County. You're, you're saying, okay, to Gratchit County, go back. Well, what happens if we have an area of the county that, that has a problem and they can't meet? What are you going to do about that?
Or people are still afraid of me. There's still.
There's still other people out there that are concerned. We're, we're not stopping people from meeting. We're, we're not.
Give them the option to zoom in.
They, or they have an offer, like, like we have decided to come back to work. But what, 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 I mean, for the most part, I think most of us here are vaccinated. I can't swear to it, but I think most of us are. So, but there's some boards, I'm sure that they're not. I, I'm not going to.
I think you can still zoom in. I don't know why you.
We could still operate. We'd have to have three of us here for a forum.
You have to have a forum.
Right, you have to have a forum.
Can I give an example? We had a 911 meeting the other day. It was Dan, Nate, Dave Nelson. That is not enough for a forum in person. And the rest zoomed in. So we would not have been able to have our 911 meeting last Thursday had we not been still into the declaration.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Another thing too is going directly to these Open Meetings Act requirements. I agree with what you're saying, Chairman Murphy. I would like us to get back to normal as quickly as possible as well. However, if we rescind the declaration, that rescinds or takes away the tool that all of the folks that have to comply with Open Meetings Act, it takes away that tool and we will have to comply with the old-fashioned in-person. And that's going to create challenges like what you've heard from, you know, from George and others. And it would be a challenge for my board. There are people, even though there's a lot of people that are public safety and a lot of them have had their shots, there is hesitancy of 10 or 12 people meeting in that small little emergency operations center.
And the other side of the coin is that you can still, you could still zoom in. The only difference is you can't do a vote. So in other words, you could still have your meeting. And if you don't do any voting, then you really don't.
You would have a quorum to have a meeting. You would have a quorum to have a meeting if you don't have enough people there.
Yeah, you don't have a quorum.
You have a quorum.
I mean, what I'm saying is that if, if people are zooming in, you don't have enough in, in person, you can still have a meeting, you just cannot vote.
Right, so you can't discuss, discuss any business.
That completely negates the 911 affair.
How, how many people are on your board?
We have nine members.
Nine members, so you need five there. And four could zoom in.
Yep. But if you, if you rescind the declaration, as I understand it by what the state did with passage of law, and this is all going back, back in 2020 with the Emergency Management Act and yada, yada, yada. But the state requiring locals to adopt a declaration of state of emergency with a situation of Open Meetings Act, a virtual manner. And if we rescind our local declaration, it takes that tool away from the local boards and commissions and things like that. So they would be forced to comply with the Opens Meetings Act by having to be in quorum in person.
So at the end of the year, do you think everybody would be willing to come back and?
They'll have to.
They'll have to.
Yeah, it would just expire.
Expires, it runs out. They'll have to.
The governor's saying expires then.
I think we're just trying to, I think we're getting along fine. I just think we're forcing other people to tell them how to do it, you know?
Oh, here's Marcus.
Yeah. This is a, I, I think, I welcome this debate. I, I like what people are saying. At the last Board of Health meeting last Wednesday, the Health Department's counsel was that boards like this one, the Boards of Commissioners, the Board of Health and groups like that should feel free to go back to face-to-face meetings. We feel like these, this is a safe setting. But when we looked at really the out, some of the outlying remote rural areas, we're still seeing a lot of cases. In fact, we did have another death last week in Gratchit County. The rates have not come down as much in Gratchit as they have in some other places. So our counsel was to wait a couple more months before taking any action so that the, the townships and other groups that still want to meet remotely have that option. But we think we can get started in that direction by having groups like the Commissioners, the Board of Health, the big ones, go ahead and transition to face-to-face, but just wait a, a couple more months for, before we require everyone else to come along with us. Just because we're still seeing those cases, they haven't gone away yet.
Marcus, I agree the cases are there, but I think what happens is that you're actually, have people on these boards and some of them are volunteer boards that you're almost forcing them to come. And if they personally, there's still people that, I'm in a business that sees a lot of people and there's a lot that don't come still today. You know, and if I had everybody with a mask on, they still don't come and they're afraid.
Yeah, I agree with you. So that's why I think we should.
So I think to force a small, small entity, the Veterans Board or whatever, to say, you guys got to have enough there to get a quorum to have a meeting. I just don't see any reason to do that.
And we're counseling to not, not, not take action yet. That's our advice.
Marcus, what's the vaccination rate among over sixty-five age group?
Oh, um, if you can wait, I'll check on that in one second, I'll get right back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, I'm not going to be able to pull up the exact number for you. Um, but, uh, I was just talking to Dr. Morse about that this week. And what we know is that for, uh, Grashit County, it is lower than the state average. So like, um, we said, you know, uh, vaccination rate is, is right around forty percent overall for Grashit. And, um, uh, so it, it, for the over seventy-five, it's also lagging the rest of the state. So, uh, our encouragement again is, is just to wait. We don't need to do it tonight. Um, we're getting close and I understand the enthusiasm, uh, for sure. Um, but that, so that's just the Health Department's advice, uh, to you and I will, uh, I'll, uh, drop it now, so.
All right, thank you, Marcus, uh, any further discussion?
Do we want to?
I, I think I'd like to roll call vote on this issue, if you would, could call the roll.
Is to withdraw the local emergency declaration resolution twenty-two fifty-eight. So Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Bailey?
No.
Commissioner Bunty?
I don't know.
Commissioner Lumberman?
No.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Motion failed, I'm hoping we can bring this up another time. Alrighty, next, um, uh, I believe Keegan's on this one, approval of, uh, uh, to say something?
Tax ready?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, I've got the, uh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, tax rate request form, the L forty twenty-nine. So this one should be pretty nice and easy, it's, uh, the exact same as last year, it'd be eleven five point five three zero six mils for the operating village. Um, I believe that's the same amount as, uh, two thousand twenty and two thousand nineteen.
All right, you need a motion on this?
Ah, yep, I believe so.
Yeah, we need to.
All right, uh, do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, do we have a second?
Support.
A second by, uh, Commissioner Smith, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, I?
Right.
I, I was opposed, nay. Motion passed and I believe you had something else, uh, you wanted to bring before us?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to this one and, and Keegan can fill in. Uh, again, I appreciate your grace in allowing me to add this as a late item. I did place at each of your seats a memorandum, uh, that practically explains the issue. Um, we're having a staff turnover, we're having staff turnover in the equalization department. Um, Diane Thomas is going up to work with the treasurer and Tracy McCune is going up to work with the register of deeds. So the opportunity here is for, uh, Keegan to hire his own staff, um, and to look at the staffing, the characters, not characters, the, the qualities, credentials and so forth that he would really like to have in the office. We are at issue tonight is the position previously occupied by Diane Thomas. Um, uh, that position has been at a grade six. Um, we're asking to have that reclassified at a grade seven. The, the typical process when a position is vacated, particularly one that has been occupied by an individual for quite some time, and also when there's an office like the equalization office that has gone through a great deal of, uh, change over the last couple of years. We always want to look at that position, review the position description. Uh, does it continue to reflect what that position is and, and should and must be doing? And, uh, uh, create, uh, do updates as needed and then, uh, score, rescore the position. Uh, in this case, uh, we long wanted, uh, someone in that position with the, uh, MCAO certification. There have been plans for the person in that position to, uh, attain that certification for a variety of reasons that, that, uh, didn't happen. Also, there's been, um, the, uh, desire to have this position do some time out in the field. Uh, there can be some basic measurements of calculations of data gathered and brought back, uh, for, uh, for Keegan's use. Also, this position would like to see it, um, doing, uh, slightly more complex work in some direct support of the equalization director. So, um, uh, the, the, the base of the positions very much the same. Um, the aspirations for the position are the same. Uh, but when we actually add those to the position description and rescore it, it does come in at a seven rather than a six. So we're asking for a reclassification of this, uh, position. It's the, um, the equalization assessor, uh, asking that you approve or reclass to a grade seven.
Alrighty, any questions on that? And I believe we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
That we reclassify, um, this department or this, um, position from a grade six to a grade seven.
All right, motion by Commissioner Bunting, is there a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Smith, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, I?
I.
I oppose, nay. Alrighty, we're up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, we haven't hired anybody yet, but, okay, never mind, sorry.
All right, uh, moving on to, uh, playground equipment, uh, Pete? Or are you handling this, Tracy?
Uh, uh, Commissioner Lumberman, do you, are you handling this?
I can handle this. Um, this is playground equipment for Hubshire Park. This, uh, the presentation here was the low bid. And, uh, it's the same, uh, company that had, I did the equipment, I believe for Reed Park in the past. So it's a good match. Um, my screen just.
That was a good budget, that was a budget, the capital improvement budget, I think, yeah.
Oh, I, I got it.
Okay. I proved we, we, you know, I mean, it was near capital budget.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Smith, there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman, uh, any questions, further discussion? All those in favor, I?
I.
I.
I oppose, nay. Motion passed. Okay, we're, we've already handled number ten there. Uh, then we're moving on to some unfinished business. I think John, you were going to handle this on the op-ed or is Chris or the both of you?
We're both, we both are and I need to punt for another meeting, I didn't get, um, what I needed to look at. And, um, you know, I, to me, it just is in principle, usually it seems like the easiest thing to do isn't the best thing to do. And they're making it so easy for it to just slide, uh, into that, into that fund. So I just wanted to look at it and we didn't get the numbers the, that I actually wanted to look at yet. So if I cover it at the next meeting, that still, I think, gives us nine days' time.
I think we have until the twenty-fourth or fifth.
Yeah.
So the next meeting will be June fifteenth, so let's put it on that agenda. Uh, next discussion of any process for distribution of funds under the rescue plan. Um, I think all I have to say on it is if people have proposals for us, they should bring us, bring it to us.
Chuck, uh, or Commissioner Murphy, um, how, how would you like people to find out that they can bring proposals to you?
Any suggestions, will you put it on the website, spread it around, ask departments, I would think?
Yeah, um, th- this is what I've been trying to get at with this process issue. You know, the departments don't have particular, uh, needs, we can put it on the website, we're just awaiting direction from you.
Any ideas?
I guess, I guess we talked originally, we probably ought to look at some needs that the county as a whole has. You know, it's hard to put stuff out there and have people come and say, I have a good cause. And somehow we are going to make it fit into this and say, sure, or say, no, now all of a sudden I like that cause better than this cause. I think that the county, I think that our administrator or somebody ought to be looking at our county and saying, you know, I, you know, is there something that, 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 that we need in buildings? Is there something that we need as a county that we don't have? You know, that we can make work here, you know, that, that we're going to have to go out and borrow money for or something. I don't know what that would be, you know? Few years ago, we talked about parking, there's not enough parking here, you know, should we be looking revisiting that again? I'm just thinking things like that, some, some infrastructure, if there's anything this county needs. You know, should we be looking at it now while we have it? It's going to be hard to tell people no. It's going to be hard to, it's going to be hard to tell people no. We've given a half a million dollars away tonight and we think it'll fit in there.
Well, we've got a lot of government entities and I would propose that the board, through the help of the administrator, draft a letter to all our public entities, our townships, our cities, all of our government entities. Those are the ones that we should actually reach out to, because they're reaching out to everybody else. And if, if we can reach out to them, they can come back with some proposals, that would be a start. But I agree with you, Sam, you can't ask everybody because everybody's got an idea. But if.
It happens, it happens when you start asking entities. You're not asking for ten thousand dollars. No, I mean, cost some of these townships a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars to get a road.
Yeah.
Brian, you know, five miles of road or put a little apple or something in it, whatever they do. You know, I think you're, you'll, you'll go through this pretty quick. I mean, seven million bucks is a lot of money, but you'll go, that's okay to use it, but I, I think we got to get the best bang for it.
And, and, and I've got some that said, yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to have a discussion of that and other ones said, don't bug me. So that, that's all over the map.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, so I've had some people that say, uh, you know what, I'd like to have a discussion about that. Or other people say, no, we don't need anything. So I, I, it's, it's, that's why I say if, if we reach out to the townships, we, we represent every township in this county. And I've reached out to mine to tell them, you know, ask them things, but some want us to have a discussion, others don't want to be back, so.
I asked at the Arcade Township meeting and it was unanimous for broadband.
Yeah.
But I would think it would be for the rural.
I would think so. I think everyone.
Let's see, when you start looking at broadband, they're going to put a little piece in by where I live. The, the guy, guy that owns the places in, um, Stanton, he just sold out to a bigger company, like a twenty-seven million dollar grant. But to run broadband down, catch maybe twenty houses in my loop and they're going to run. Eight hundred thousand dollars to plow it in. And they're going to charge me what, fifty bucks a month for it or something like that? You know, you start talking projects eight hundred thou, you bought broadband, you pick a township, why did you get more broadband than I got? You know, and you'll eat that money up.
You'll eat.
These guys got twenty-seven million bucks, you know, and they built a building and I think this other company bought it out and got some more. You know, I think it's about if they can lay a map out and say, I'm going to do this, the government's handing them the money. You know, and, um.
But there, but I would not discount it, this is why. Right, at the federal level right now, our representative and some others are pushing forward to have tax credits for broadband. Uh, uh, Michigan government entity is pushing forward to have some kind of broadband. So I don't want to discount it out of hand that we can't afford it, but maybe, uh, some dollars with other dollars can make it work. But I'm, I, I'm the last one to tell you how, because I just, I'm hearing these things bit by bit, you know? But I, I don't want to discount it because I know I'm in touch with enough families to know that their children through this pandemic, especially in Grashit County, and that's all I can speak to, have been suffering.
North, North Harbor Clinton County, I got friends that had to have their kids, they couldn't get a room at Michigan State, but they only give them a room there, they could go to their room and board, they paid for it, couldn't go there because they, but they let them in under some type of agreement, didn't have good enough broadband to do their work. So you could go there and do nothing else in Michigan State. What I'm saying, seven million bucks ain't going to buy much broadband.
Well, I know, but I, I much, many people plowed in. Saying it, it's something to, I think it's something for us to explore as far as maybe our little dollars aren't going to go very far, but the federal government dollars, the Michigan, the state of Michigan dollars, those types of things. And, and, you know, we've got to.
But I think companies are going to get that money, not into broadband business. I think companies are going to get that money, they're going to get the tax credits, they're going to get the cash to put it in.
Uh, you know, on broadband, I heard one idea that what might be needed is that last link, that last little link right to the person or something.
So, you know, so, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't want to discount it out of hand, that's all I'm saying is that there may be, there may be some validity to, to what we're, what we're talking about broadband. But I don't know, I can't speak to that, but I think we should, I don't think we should discount it. We should explore it and say it's off the table, but I, I, I would like to not discount it at all. But I'd like to hear from some other entities, um, that want to be heard from, some don't, some do.
Tracy, um, when we've, uh, talked with, uh, Terry Ball, she has said that the treasurer's office has a network that they can ask questions into and get answers for common things that's going on. Do we have a, a network that we can tap into that we can see what other counties are doing?
Oh, yeah, I can send out a message, uh, it's just a, a group, um, ad, email addresses. I can tell you that, um, the managers are meeting again, and not by that, I mean the city managers and myself are meeting again on Thursday, June third, uh, to, and we're going to be hearing from someone who knows something about broadband. Um, so might get a little more information because, or of course, you could say broadband, you could say rural broadband and frankly, having a clue how to even begin such a project and we would surely want to retain someone, but. So try to get a little bit of additional information this Thursday that I can report back to you. Second thing is that at the first managers meeting, when we were talking about this, I, I was told by the city managers that the companies are coming in and doing the wiring in their cities without charge. So they, they don't need this, they have it. So that wiring won't need to be done and, um, there was one indi- individual who said quite adamantly that I wouldn't pay a nickel to these companies because they're going to come in and do it. Now, I'm not sure that I believe that as to the, you know, this last mile sort of, uh, service that, uh, really is the issue when you talk about rural broadband. I am keeping my ear to the wall on all of this and I hear, uh, hints that there may be other federal funds that may be forthcoming uh, to address rural broadband, so, you know, I don't think this thing is, is, is done yet. At some point, we're going to need some additional expertise to allow us to evaluate this. Uh, I think we're in the information gathering stage about this right now, trying to learn. Uh, and anything I learn, I'll keep bringing back to you. Uh, if indeed you want to keep this on the table at some level, you know, for further development. If you just, if you're just sure that you don't, then, um, you, you can instruct me and I can spend my time out of the way.
Well, I think I can just encourage, I would encourage all of us, when we go to our township meetings, to talk about this subject and see what their thoughts are directly. I've talked, so far I've talked to three townships and a village. And I've got pros and cons either way.
Yeah, and please know that, um, in calling together these managers, and this is something I initiated actually, uh, I wanted to talk about broadband because this is something that we could do together and really none of us could do it on our own. So I wanted to gauge interest and I've, of course, already learned things. Um, I also, um, indicated in putting these meetings together that I just wanted to talk about if there are other projects that, um, the cities can and townships might see us collaborating on. So I think that discussion will continue. Um, I will send out letters to all of the public entities as, uh, I heard you ask. Uh, that would, uh, the folks that would really hit that we're not hitting with the managers meeting are the township supervisors. And, um, uh, maybe some of the villages as well.
Yeah, on, on rural broadband, I know Congressman Nolan are, that's something he's working on. So we should probably contact his. So we should probably contact his office as to what might be coming down the mic on that. I know that's a big issue for, with him. Alrighty, any other discussion on that?
I just want to say that when I was going to school, I used, never dreamed I would ever have a phone or a computer or do all the things that we're doing today. And I think in the last twenty years, things have really skyrocketed with, with technology. It's real interesting.
Alrighty. Matt, any, you see any additional people on, online that might have a comment? Anybody out there have a additional public comment? They can unmute themselves and speak?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, if there is anyone, go ahead and unmute yourself. If you're on a cell phone, I believe it's star six to talk. Hearing nothing. We've reached the end of our agenda and without objection, we're adjourned.